I call this June 21 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Alderman Veneziano is prevented from attending the meeting in person this evening due to her own personal illness and has requested to attend the meeting remotely pursuant to Section 2-114 of the City Code. At such time, I would like to call for a motion to permit Alderman Veneziano to attend this evening's meeting remotely.
So moved by Ward 7?
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka has made the motion and it has been seconded by Alderman Budmats. Any discussion? No. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessasi?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Sanoyka?
Is this a motion for?
Oh, it's yes.
Jennifer Veneziano to join?
Yes.
So then, yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, Alderman Veneziano is permitted to attend remotely.
This is Jennifer. Hello?
Hi, Jennifer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is Mayor Protemp Reyes. We can hear you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Before starting, the floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address the City Council on matters that are on the agenda after the City Council discusses with staff. We ask that the persons wishing to address the City Council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the Council as a whole through the mayor and profanity may not be used in any form. With that, we'll get started with the first item on the agenda, which is fiscal year 2023 budget parameters, and I will defer to Molly Toggington.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protemp and Council. It's my first big presentation for you guys. So exciting. And it's not my favorite topic, budget. So we're going to talk about the parameters for the 2023 budget for the city of Rolling Meadows. Some of this is just kind of refresher on why the budget's important for the city, right? It's developed to meet the needs of the community, to provide the high-quality services that your residents so love and enjoy, and to provide resources for the residents and businesses so they can learn about our city operations. It's a resource. So really, that's, you know, the communication tools, what it functioned as. It keeps our policy documents, like our fund balance policies and why they're important in the document, and it's an accounting document that can tell us, you know, are we on track with what we budgeted to what we've actually spent. So to develop the budget, the city looks to kind of those key financial planning documents. So the one is really your operating budget, and the other is your five-year capital improvement plan. So that's for your larger, long-term projects. An initial development of the budget and the capital improvement plan have started, but we do want council input, and this discussion is very valuable and appreciated. We went over this at a prior meeting, but it is really a good success for the city that we've won the Triple Crown Award once again, and that's winning the Distinguished Budget Award, the Annual Financial Comprehensive Award, the Audit, and the Popular Annual Financial Award. So that's really good because not a lot of places do it, and there's less than 300 in the nation, so that's very good. So to get kind of down to the gist of what we're looking at for the budget, the general fund is our main fund, right? It provides for what I would call, you know, the basic things that people think of government, your operations. So this is your police, your fire, your public works. You know, when you call and you need something done, it's usually funded by the general fund. So really, the general fund, we're going to start looking at the revenues to really assess where they're at. The Illinois Municipal League released in February 2022 their current revenue estimates for all those kind of state shared revenues, like your motor fuel tax, the state use tax, well, and the cannabis taxes on there and personal property replacement tax. Now, the kind of bluish line towards the bottom of the chart shows that there's a 0% change year over year. However, this is actually fairly positive because last year at this time, it was a 2% decrease. So we are making positive strides as a state as a whole, but in these revenues. And so Finance is really going to look at these and start doing the revenue estimates for the general fund based off what we see with the state, how we're trending with the state estimates. And then, of course, IML does release kind of a secondary. This is their preliminary. They'll release a secondary estimate with more information, and then we'll look to that to update anything if there are any drastic changes. And, you know, of course, we'll let council know if there is something that changes a lot. The general fund expenditures is your, really, your main source for salary, benefits, contractual and supplies. These really follow where we're at with our labor contracts. And then, of course, you know, we look to, like, supplies. What's trending right now? What's the buying power we have for the dollar now? Do we need increases, decreases? Where are we at? For our contracts, police and fire contracts are in place, and then AFME and Local 150 will be coming up in the next few years. So in the current budget, you have a manager's hold of $400,000 for anticipated expenditures out of the contract negotiations. So we cut that in half, right, because we just finished police, to 200,000 that we think we're going to include in the FY '23 budget. Then we're also going to look, and this is a major initiative of Manager Sabo, he really wants to find ways that we can, you know, be innovative keywords we've been using here. How can we find ways to do more with what we have? And so in the past, we've done things where we looked at vehicle stickers and the amount of staff time that took to monitor and, you know, minister, and that could switch the natural gas use tax. So you've done some of this, but now it's trying to find other things that we can do. So like joint purchasing contracts? Do we just look at the contracts we have in place? Is it time to go out for bid on a contract we've had in place for 15 years? You know, are there places where we can find kind of key wins for the city there? And also, we're implementing our financial software, and we can use that to enhance things. So in my short amount of time here so far, we're working to really take, like, the purchasing process. So when you initially ask for a purchase request, it's a requisition here. It's still had a lot of paper-heavy work, and we're working, I'm working, to kind of eliminate the paper function and put everything as an attachment, and we'll do all the reviews electronically. So we're trying to use kind of that new software system as another way to improve those services. And then these are just some continuations from prior budgets, so I'm sure you've heard them before. We're still planning for the $100,000 transfer from the general fund to vehicle equipment. The transfers for the debt service are still planned in the budget. We're following the bond ordinances. However, in 2024, you do have one bond that comes to an end, which will free up about $730,000 starting in FY '24. So we have one more budget cycle to get through before that's there, and that can be used for different investments. And then charge-back funding, we're going to increase. We're basically looking at that because it's your internal service funds, right? So this is how we can charge the other funds to pay for what we're providing internally. It does not cover those funds 100% at this time, so we're looking to see where we need to be or what we can afford in the other funds to cover those services. The 9911 Fund is for your emergency communications. The fund balance is in policy right now, and it's supported by a property tax levy of 700,000. I did note in the, I caught an error in the memo, and the early part of the memo on, like, page three, I said we'd leave the levy flat, but later in the document, there is an increase requested on this property tax levy, so I, I just didn't catch the first reference to it. So there is an increase being requested. We'll go into more detail on a further slide. And then this one really is future funding needs is where this is coming from. We do have the unfunded mandate to do the body cameras by 2024. State motor fuel tax and local roads, again, I think sometimes we'll think it's just for roads, but look at all the other things you fund with this. Streetlights, road salt, sidewalks, bridges, I mean, you have lots of stuff we need to fund. We're including the rebuild Illinois funding in this fund as well. This fund is really looked at through the capital improvements program because this is a lot of the large projects, and what are we going to do over the long term with this funding? And the annual tax levy ranges from a million to 1.5. Utilities Fund, right now, is still recommended, no rate increase because you had a rate stabilization program in place. You are maintaining your 25% of fund balance right now, but I just recommend to adopt that as a formal fund balance policy. I'm sure it was discussed last year, but it was never actually formally adopted, so we're bringing it back with this budget to formally include that as an adopted item. And then capital projects, again, will be in this, so there'll be a lot of discussion on this project with CIP. And NSW Jawa is looking at future rate reductions, hopefully, in the water purchases. The refuse fund, this rate has been held since 2014. The fund balance just gotten to range with the 2021 audit, and you'll see, we're talking about typically, you guys have the audit and the actuaries all at the same time. Due to the staffing changes, audit actuaries are actually next week, but you'll see, we just kind of got into fund balance range on this fund, but that was really supported by the one-time transfer from the general fund. Even if we put the automation project to the side, this fund does have expenditures that are increasing. There are vehicles that need to be replaced, and of course, you know, the buying power of vehicles right now has decreased because the costs are going up and the, really, the lag time from what you order to when they're available is increasing as well. But then we do have the refuse car automation project. The annual cost is 62,000 for five years. So we did year one in FY '22. We still need 62,000 in the next four years. And this, right now, in the current year, is budgeted in vehicle and equipment funds. To support this, this is where we're asking for council kind of input and direction here is you do have your transfer station revenue. Currently, that revenue goes into the general fund. This is an opportunity that we could consider moving all or a portion of that funding to the refuse fund, so that could help support some of the needs in that fund. It will reduce, right, your operations funding in the general fund. So there's something to look to there. The revenues on the actual collections have declined somewhat, so it would add funding to the refuse fund, but I think we need to do a little more analysis to see if it will continue to decline or if there's, you know, maybe just a blip in the cycle right now. But it would be an assistance to the refuse fund. And we can come back to the kind of questions on these then, if you want. The liability insurance, health insurance funds, they're both performing expected. They both are above what we would recommend for fund balance policies. Again, these two were discussed during the last budget cycle to adopt formal fund balance policies, so we've brought that back to the table. Liability insurance would be a million dollar, which is basically what we pay one year is about 700,000 plus any, you know, unforeseen costs. So we rounded it up to a million. The health insurance fund would be equal to a half a year's payment, which is about 2.25 million. The one thing to note with this is we are part of the IPBC, the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative. So it basically helps us actually gain a better buying power because we do it together with other communities to purchase our health insurance at a larger volume. But they also have reserves for the city. So we transfer funds, what I call kind of on a budget basis, right? You usually have that choice with your comm ed bill where they say, do you want to pay actuals or do you want to pay a budget? And at the end of the year, they say you're a plus or minus, and I feel like with that one, they're always minus, you always have to come up with more money. This case, we've been performing well, and we've been able to put money into the reserves there, so we do have some reserves we can look at actually reducing in the health insurance fund, and we would still be within the recommendation for this fund balance policy. The capital projects fund, building, land, vehicle and equipment, these, again, really are all your capital projects. They'll be looked at during the CIP process. And again, looking at the chargebacks and how we recover costs to support different funds within the internal service fund. So like the garage is an internal service fund that helps the vehicle and equipment fund. So there's different things we need to look at for those. Of note is you also have TIF number two, the Kirchhoff Analogy TIF. It has been a negative fund balance for the city, it still is, but at year beginning in 2021, you were negative 834,000. Year ending, we're negative 475,000. So now that the debt is paid off in that TIF and we're starting to build and gain the increment, you are starting to come back in a positive way on that fund. So it will be, if not in '22 and '23, should be back towards the positive on its own. And then another council input and direction. So we have our property tax increase scenarios. Right now, we're at 14.7 million for your total levy. It's been held that way for three years. And then here's possible scenarios of what a half a percent increase would be, 1%, 2%. And 2% is about $300,000 increase. Thanks to Alderman O'Brien, we've, I've added, I don't know how well you can see it, but I put together kind of a historical fine info for this. So since the 2018 levy, you've had one increase from the 2018 levy to the 2019 levy. In total, the total city levy went up about 2.4%. Then it's remained flat for the 2019, 2020 and 2021 levies. So that's kind of, the graph shows you the orange is the debt service portion, and then the blue is your operations and the pension funding. If you go up to the 2%, I put the kind of red dot to show there's a slight increase, and it would go up to 15.04 million if you did select to go to a 2% increase. Some of the support at looking at the levy is, you know, your police and fire pension funds actually did really well, and we're going to learn a whole lot about them at next council meeting when the actuaries are here. They performed very well in this year, but as we know, you're getting closer and closer to being at that 2040 deadline every year. Get closer, usually your required funding goes up. You had a great year in both of these pension funds. Actually, the recommended levy from the actuaries is to go down, but working with Manager Sabo was trying to keep this levy consistent because there's an internal city kind of funding assumption to get to 70% funded, and we haven't reached that target, and the state requirement is 90% at 2040. So if we leave these two levies where they're at, you will make a big jump at getting forward in that funding percentage and getting us closer to where we need for that 2040 mark. IRMRF is an increase of 3%. This is for all other staff for their pension funding. 911, I mentioned a little bit, we have the body cameras that we need to fund as the unfunded mandate from the state, and so the current estimate for that is like 300,000 to 600,000. The chief said he, as we get a little bit closer, we'll start getting better, more updated estimates to see where we really need to be to fund those. And then local roads, again, we're kind of back to that buying power. We need to build some reserves in there, but the buying power for local roads is, you know, diminishing as all of our supplies go up. I mean, you just have to look at gas and know, you know, we're being charged more for them to do stuff, the contractors and who we're using to get the supplies out there, you know, actually do the work. And then for operations, when we look at operations in total, this is your police, fire and public works portions of the levy. When the FY 2021 year-ended audit figure, total general fund operations is 30.6 million. You're only funding about 10% of the general fund through your levy. So again, it's that buying power. We have rising costs happening and, you know, rising inflation, so there is some need to look at funding for the general fund in your operations. Again, we can go into more detail on the 2021 year-end audit next week. And then there's direction from council input, or in council input on, would you be willing to consider an increase in property tax levy? And if there's any other direction in the working scenario that council would like to provide? So I would kind of like to open the floor for questions. Mayor Protemp on these items.
Do any of the council members have any questions? Alderman?
Thank you. Quick question on the, do we have a reason why the transfer is going down? I know there's a lot of stuff going on, but like, it looks like it might be 230,000 this year, so it could be down by another 40,000 based on where we were in June. Does that mean like less municipalities are bringing weighted stuff? Because that's a $50,000, $40,000 hit right there, but I, I don't know what goes into the generation other than, I'm assuming municipalities passing through the transfer station.
Honestly, this is one where I know I need to do more homework. I have not gotten to a source of why it's going on. I've only really seen the numbers so far. I did talk to interim Public Works Director Charlton, and I think this is something we want to look into more and get back to you. And, you know, hopefully, it's we're using more recycling, but I don't know.
That's absolutely fair. Thank you.
That would be a hopeful thing, but we will get back to you guys on what's going on with that revenue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. So I want to start off early, and I know that we've talked about all of the different reasons why we would need to increase the levy to make sure that we're in a strong financial position, not just for this year, but for the years going forward. I still think it's really important when we're talking with residents to explain why we can't use some of these funds, like the insurance fund, where if the minimum was at 325,000 and we have over a million dollars in there, why we can't reallocate some of those funds, and making sure that that's really clear as to why those other scenarios wouldn't work before we give the okay for a working scenario of 2%. Alternatively, if there's other reasons to explain why this is a responsible way to move forward and keeping that really clear for residents too, to say 2% is a consistent adjustment. However, if in an ideal scenario, we're looking at 2% this year and then again 2% next year, or something that's more long-term so that others can plan, I think that would also be really helpful to communicate to residents. Alternatively, I have had some residents reach out, and their concern is that they anticipate, some of them anticipate property tax levies increasing because everything else is expensive. However, the counter to that is I have residents who have said that all costs are increasing, but my wages are not. And so I want the council to just be sensitive to the fact that that's the situation for some residents, not all residents. And I, and so I want to make sure that we're balancing the sensitivity of our residents with the fiduciary responsibility that we have as this council for not just the 2023 proposed budget, but then those budgets going forward as well.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman Sessi?
I'd like to echo a little bit Alderman Sanoyka's request for sensitivity to that, you know, not everybody's getting a raise. Everything is going up just to get to work is putting people in a bad situation. With that said, I would like to definitely dig in and see if there are creative ways to, you know, for example, get the refuse fund so it's self-sustaining like it should be without having to put the full burden on the residents as far as the potential increase in their garbage bill. I'm not sure if, you know, I'd have to do a little bit more investigation, but to me, it seems like I'm kind of wondering why the transfer station stuff is, you know, part of that at least is not going into the refuse fund. I mean, it seems like it's, you know, a perfectly suited thing to be collecting revenue for that fund out of that. I do know that Public Works has had to really scrimp and tighten up on all of the services that are provided through that fund. So if we can come up with some creative ways to fund that outside of increasing, I'm not necessarily opposed to an increase if we have to. But along with all the funds and everything, if we can minimize the increase in tax levy, I would, I would definitely fully support that. However, I do know with costs going up, there is, 2023 could potentially be a very bad recession year. You know, I do believe that we might need to do at least a small incremental increase in the tax levy this year. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Sessi. Any more questions from the council?
I'll dig in.
Alderman Budmats?
Thank you. Is it possible for you to get us the, the recommended or the expected threshold values for the health and the liability insurance reserves that we, that we currently, what that should be compared to what we have so that we know how much, if there is excess, what it is so that we know how to use that appropriately? That will help make a better decision.
Yes, I can give you the audited year-end 2021 on both of those, but I will know if you're spending on fund balance for them, like, if we reappropriate the fund balance from those funds to somewhere else, I would consider that one-time money in nature. It wouldn't be, so if you're thinking about that, I would like you to think about it as like, if it's one-time in nature, then what one-time thing can we use it for? So we don't put ourselves into a bind in like 2024 when that funding's been used, but we had a recurring service added, and now we need to find funding again.
Oh, you, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. Go right ahead.
Okay. And then I think that based on the fact that we've approved, we've approved raises for both the police and the firefighters and it, that are in the neighborhood of 3%, and then that we should anticipate that, seeing that- And then that we should anticipate that, seeing that police and fire is more than 50% of our budget, that our budget should be increasing by a similar percentage or the levy that drives the budget. So I'm not, I think it would be foolhardy to think that there's no reason to increase the levy because it's been four years and four budgets. And meantime, city workers have been receiving raises all along those four years. So I think that if we have a budget policy and all of our funds are within their ranges that are supposed to be, but it seems like they're moving down to the bottom of their ranges versus staying in the healthy middle, if you will, that we really do need to consider increasing the levy to do that. And how much of an increase would be based on where there are funds available that we haven't tapped yet? And concerning the refuse fund, I think that the transfer station is a refuse, is a refuse type event, if you will, and it really should have those funds, should not go to the general fund, but they should go to the refuse fund because we're directly offsetting refuse costs by doing that. And whatever we have to pay to put things there as well as get paid for the value of the station. So it really belongs in that fund rather than going to the general fund. I'll yield.
Alderman, Alderman Budmats?
Thank you. No, I would, in terms of the refuse fund, I would be supportive of moving that or the transfer station over to that part. But just a thought that in my mind as well is that that, I think to Director Talkington's point before, it's like we're not increasing the dollars. It's still the same revenue into the city. It's just being put in another fund. So, but I'm in full support. I think it makes no, I think it makes perfect sense, but it's not like we're getting a $230,000 influx on an annual basis. And then kind of where I stood last year too, is Director Talkington and I talked over the, actually today, is it's been about a 0.6% increase when we looked at the annual increase. I mean, we've held it flat for four years, and then it was, the last one was 2.4. So if we take it across four years, basically a 0.6% increase each year. I am personally, as I said last year, comfortable with a property tax levy because that's why city residents live here. We all here, they love the services provided, but there's also a cost to that. I know we have to be conscious of it because my concern is if we don't do it now, we haven't done it the last three years, where are we going to go? I'd rather, and I'll just, a 1% increase this year. I think we could work with staff and maybe get to a 1% compromise versus nothing this year, and then maybe it's 4% next year instead of what we could have done at 2%. That's where I'm concerned about going forward. If we hold it flat at zero again, we might not be able to avoid a 4% jump in a year where if we do one year or 1.5%, however the numbers work out this year, and a gradual step. Because I think that's more digestible to residents versus flat, 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 then boom, 5%. That's just my thought. So I, similar to Alderman Budmats, I'm not opposed to reviewing increase to the maximum of right now, 2%, but clearly if we can do lower, we can do lower.
Alderman Busasi?
On what you've done with the budget so far, how much has the, I know we had a presentation regarding our infrastructure with regards to our water mains and our, you know, basically our city's plumbing, so to speak. I do know that there are funds that potentially could be given towards that end from the, yeah, from the, was it ARPA? I was wondering if that's all calculated in, in the recommendation for a potential levy increase or not? Because I think we need to really aggressively be going after that part of our city's infrastructure now. Because I know prior to my ward, getting, a lot of it getting redone last year, we were having water main breaks and a lot of things going on in my ward with regards to that stuff just because, you know, some of it was original. I mean, and we got other parts of the city that is original and the stuff that's way past its useful life. So I just want to make sure that that is part of our budget.
Yes, so so far, based on the direction of the prior city manager and prior finance director, the funding that's come in, remember, we've only gotten the one kind of distribution, has been put into the utilities fund. We should be getting the second distribution here soon. So I've been waiting for it. But Manager Sabo would like to have a meeting, and I think we're meeting sometime this month to really discuss where the funding for ARPA should go and utilities being one of the considerations, but it could also go to, you know, other projects the city needs as well. But I think having more of a comprehensive discussion of where all that funding would be is happening internally, and then Manager Sabo would come back with a recommendation on actually where we'd spend that funding. Again, I wouldn't necessarily pair this directly with property tax levy because it's one-time funding in nature versus recurring, but it could, like you said, come to some compromise, right? We could delay some portion of the property tax levy increase to balance with the one-time funding that we have available to use. So there are some, you know, ways we can look at using those funds.
Yes, and that, and as has been said many times in several call meetings, we do have that one debt expiring in the near future as well. So if we could, you know, I'm very much on the same page as some of my fellow aldermen on potential increase, that small incremental ones are better than consistent zeros, although we've done that due to, you know, COVID and other things. It was warranted, but that's about, that's about it.
I would add, as a follow-up, the debt service coming off for your 2024 budget, that is recurring in nature, so it's a little bit different than when we're looking at the like grant funding. So that one would be something we could use here over here.
No, no, I totally understand that.
Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So, and I think that that's what I had originally alluded to earlier today was to talk about how if we have extravagant fund balances, that we can use that as a one-time transfer for our 2023 proposed budget. Because the debt service then is going to be completely paid off for that one bond at the, for 2024, that we'll have that 730,000 freed up to then take care of those other expenses. So, and that's why, similar to what Alderman Budmats had stated, I think it's going to be really important for us to know, once we have the actuals from 2021, how much we can transfer out if we are 10 times more than what's necessary.
Alderman Budmats?
One last comment. The fact that the actuaries are going to come here next week and tell us how rosy the picture is, is a little bit, I'm not 100% in agreement because I can see that next year they're going to come back and tell us how it took a terrible hit because the market's down 10 or 15% this year. And so it would be foolish to take advantage of last year's gains and then get to pay it all back next year in spades to try to, to try to get it back up to where we need to be. So we need to be cognizant of the fact that this year's stock market is going to affect next year's recommended amount of funding from the actuaries. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Alderman Veneziano, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Yes, I was ready my turn. I agree with my fellow council members. I do believe that the transfer station should be going into the refuse fund. And I hear recall Manager Sabo telling us that those numbers are preliminary, that they are still going to be investigating those numbers to see, you know, how accurate they are and the numbers forthcoming, how accurate they will continue to be. And so then, I also agree, I was very much opposed last year to a tax levy increase, but I do think it's necessary this year. We obviously are in an inflation period, and so I think that we as a city need to prepare for, you know, the next year and kind of the unknown. I have to agree with Alderman O'Brien that, you know, if we could do it slowly, gradually, that that would definitely be better for all residents versus, you know, nothing and then, you know, a high tax levy. So I'm not opposed to 2%. I would prefer the one, but I do appreciate showing scenarios at both options. And so getting more in detail. And then also if Chief Nowacki can give us a little bit more information about those camera costs, we've been hearing about those, I think, now for almost a year. And I feel like if the due date is coming sooner and the cost is going to keep rising. And so that makes me a little nervous not knowing about that yet. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Alderman Busasi?
Sorry, one other thing just popped into my head. I know we've discussed at times very, you know, looking at are there additional positions and things like that needed in city staff? I want to make sure that whatever recommendations we get for the budget address some of that, particularly in the area of social services. If, you know, I want to make sure that the gains that we've had this year, that we can continue to improve social services. I want people to be able to be in our city and know that, you know, it's not just, you know, public works and fire, police and that. That's another area that I think we, I would like our city to be known for, is that when people are truly in need, that we're, we're there to help. So I don't want to lose any ground in that area. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. I think that all of us are in agreement about the transfer station funds going into refuse. Should we take a straw vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, raise your hand.
I think Jennifer raising her hand.
And then we can come back and look at the tax levy as we do, you know, more of the work on the budget, right? We haven't really gone through all the revenues and done all of that and come back with different scenarios on the property tax levy that address, you know, use of some fund balances and see where we can, you know, be creative in finding financing that's one-time and recurring and how those can match with our services.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Talkington.
Good first, good first swipe at it. Thank you.
Alderman Budmats? I mean Alderman O'Brien, sorry.
Nick can read my mind.
You raised your hand quite a few times.
Do you need direction from us about the 2%? Because I know that was in one of your questions. We're good?
I think it's okay. I think we got enough feedback that I can meet with Manager Sabo and really figure out, like I said, where the fund balances are and get, take a little bit more time to give you guys a more.
Something that's a little more incremental as opposed to?
Right, so we'll work and come back with a different proposal for you guys on that.
Thank you.
First, thanks.
All right.
One more.
Alderman Budmats?
Thank you. If there are any funds that we don't have a fund balance policy for, could we look at getting one established this year so that when we look at next year's, we can, we can have an easy barometer to figure out where all of our funds are at and which ones need to be pushed up or down? But I think that there's a few left that are, that don't have a policy and that probably should have one.
I will say I will try, but sometimes the research takes a little bit longer. And with it being kind of my first year doing it here and Manager Sabo's being first year, I will attempt to get to most of the fund balances. But whatever I can't get to this year, I will definitely include for the future year or maybe do it mid-year. So it's not something we have to tie with the budget cycle, but we could, you know, try to structure it where we can make it work.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any questions? Anything else? No? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely. Second?
Thank you, Alderman Budmats for the first, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the meeting is adjourned.